Good morning, everybody. I would call the reporter, the Rickly Scheduled Board of Supervisors meeting for this Tuesday, August 7, 2018, and ask if everybody please join the board as we honor our American Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and good morning. Fairly packed agenda in terms of number of items, but I don't see anything that I'm expecting to take a particularly long time. However, I do have an 11:30 in Ames that I have to be at, so at 11 o'clock, regardless of where we are, I will turn the gavel over to Marty Chitty, and Marty, you and Lawrence will handle it from there. So let's jump right in and get going. First item, as always, is public comment number one. It's an opportunity for members of the public to comment on anything you'd like to comment on. And seeing no one moving to the microphone, we'll move on to a report from our insurance partner, Nat Tedesco, and their annual insurance presentation.
Good morning.
Morning, everyone.
Morning, good morning. Thank you for the opportunity to be on the agenda this morning and to provide an overview of your insurance. Andrew Rickles is on my right, Susan Hoshier, who maybe you know as an audience, and Todd London is here today as well, and has had some involvement in this as well, working with Todd. I want to take an opportunity just to review several things today related to your insurance renewal, but before I do that, I want to tell you that, and just remind you that we renewed with the Iowa Community Assurance School, what we commonly refer to as ICAP, and the Iowa Workers' Compensation Association for the Work Comp Insurance. The county's been with both of those organizations for about 15 years. It's been a good fit for this county, and I would tell you that ICAP insures about 800 municipalities across the state. Seventy-three of the 99 counties across the state are insured through ICAP. And so we continue to believe it's a good fit for Story County, as is the IMWCA for Work Comp. And we can certainly talk a little bit later if you have questions about the benefits of ICAP or even separate from this meeting today. Our job, we believe, is to not only make sure you're properly covered, you get competitive premiums, but we also want to take some time each year to look at trends, and particularly claims trends, because that's the place where we think we can have the most impact in terms of trying to detour some of that, and certainly working with your staff here as well. And so today, we want to just walk through eight or 10 slides to show you some claim activity. I think you've got this in your packet today, and I've got some extra copies for the audience if anybody would like, a color copy would like to follow along with us. But we'll just lodge right in, and we'll go to the first slide. Let me just take a quick look at work comp claims first, and that's really where the activity is for this county. There isn't a lot of non-work comp claims on a daily, weekly, annual basis here. But this is work comp claims by frequency. This is a five-year look back, going back to 2013 through the most current year, and you can see that we've broken these down by the most common types of claims. Eye, eye injuries, bites, slips and falls, overexertion, which you can see is the purple. You may not be able to see that very well, but hopefully compacted. About 17% is overexertion. That's lifting, stress, and horrible lift. Cuts about 11%. And then miscellaneous comprises the largest portion of that, which is about 44%. And so hold your question on what that really means, and I'll show you the future slides. So then we broke it down by work comp claims by dollar amounts. The frequency is the amount of claims, dollar amount, is how much is paid out. Again, you can see that in a couple of these categories, like eye claims, it's not a big dollar amount. It's about $4,800 over the past five years. Bite, which I think is probably related to the animal control, so it's just under $500. Slip and fall, on the other hand, which is the green portion up there, is about $172,000. I'll break that down just a little bit further. Overexertion, $13,000. Cuts, about $3,500. And then here comes this miscellaneous category again, which is where the frequency and the dollar amounts are, $120,000. So, Arin, you're chairing me, asking, okay, what makes up that miscellaneous category? What's in that area that is not bite, cut, burn, whatever the case may be? And so here's what makes up that miscellaneous area. 13% are outdoor rashes, commonly, I think, with some of the conservation staff, and perhaps a few other employees. 2% are burned. 19% exposure to bodily fluids. I think you might be able to predict where some of that occurs, probably related to the jail. 13%, training exercises, police activities. You've got 8% that are not fall accidents. And then you've got a fairly high category of frequency of bump, scrapes, tweets. These are cuts, bruises, scrapes, common to conservation roads, whatever the case may be. People who are employees who are doing work on a daily basis that might result in this. And then the 8% outdoors. So then again, you pull the page, we'll go to the next page, and here is those miscellaneous claims broken down by dollar amounts. And again, some of these categories are not large dollar amounts. Outdoor rashes, 110, burns, 195. Exposure to bodily fluids, about $3,500. Training exercises, on the other hand, is a large dollar amount, it's about $95,000. And I went back this morning, and I'm sure Alyssa can speak to this too. There's about three claims that made up that $95,000 over the past five years. Two of those are closed. One is still open, and certainly hoping that that will close, and so we'll see the reserve a little bit later on that. Then you may recall from the prior slide, there was about 20% in what we call kind of bump, scrape, cut. But if you look at this chart in this green box, it's only $8,300. So while you may have more frequency in a certain category, that doesn't always translate to a large dollar amount payout. And that's a tribute really to Alyssa and the staff here for getting those claims treated, getting that employee back to work, and not missing time. So it's not a concern for us. It's not a trend that we'd be concerned about as you watch the chart. And then 16,000 in other categories. Next one. Here's total number of work comp claims, and you'll see that on average, this county incurs about 18 to 20 claims a year, and that's not a surprise for a county that has this number of employees, or any municipality for that matter. We had the peak back in '13, '14 of 25, and then dipped to 20, and it's against average about 18 to 20 over the past five years. Last year was 20, I believe. So not a concern if that was, if those numbers were 35 or 40 or 50 claims a year, I think we'd be concerned about that frequency and that total number of claims. Next slide. Here's a work comp claims history by dollar amount. And even though there was a large number of claims back in 2015, excuse me, '13, '14, it didn't pay out a lot during those years, about $29,000. That's the far left graph. We had a pretty high payout in '14, '15, about $126,000. We dipped back down in '15, '16, spiked a little bit in '16, '17. And then year-to-date, or I guess through the last policy period, we paid out about $51,000. There are about five claims that have open reserves. One is predominantly the large portion of that. I think it's about $46,000 on what you see in the red there, which is the outstanding claims of $66,000. Again, those are reserves that are sitting there, waiting for that to be closed. I think some of those will be closed. Talked a lot about your experience mod, and this is something we're always happy to talk about. Go back 10 years ago, I think we were talking about this in Safety Committee recently. You go back 10 years ago, this mod was higher. I think it reached 8.6 or 8.9 at one time, which is still a good mod. And really, once county made the commitment to put in place a Safety Committee and do some other things, that mod started to drop. And so you can see it was .78 in '13, '14, dropped down to .62, dropped all the way down to .59, and that was the lowest mod in the state in any county or city at that time. I knew we did the research at the time. It spiked back a little bit because payroll is a function of your mod calculation. We won't walk through that today, but the county moved the community life payroll, off your payroll, plus, if you will. And so it spiked up a little bit, not because of claims, but just because you lost that payroll denominator, and spiked up to 6.4 and then 6.7. And we had a little bit of claims activity back in '16, '17, which drove a mod increase this year. 7.4 is still a very, very good mod in the state, but still being the top five counties. We check this every year. You're still getting a good discount on your mod premium, as you'll see here in that. Something this county should be very proud of. We did project a mod going forward, but I think if we maintain claims where they're at, I think we'll see a little bit of increase next year in that mod. Again, the trend is really good. Here's a just quick coverage snapshot. Didn't think it was going to-
Before we get to the answer, questions on claims?
None.
Good, okay.
A quick coverage snapshot. We didn't think we'd go through a lot of detail. We do this with staff. But you see, you've got about $64 million in property that we insure through ICAP. And just two points I wanted to make here. We did conduct a review of all the buildings, all of Story County buildings, back in '16. That was a process that ICAP offered up, and we took them up on that. We adjusted building values on about 11 buildings. That's all been incorporated. It resulted in very little premium increase, but the 50, about $51 million of buildings does reflect that, and I think that's a good process. We also have scheduled an IT review. It's good to look at your computers, hardware, that type of thing, every four to five years, six years. And I think that's been scheduled sometime later this year with ICAP. That's a service they provide in addition to the premium, so at $2 million, I figure it could change. About $64 million of coverage is available. Last slide I'll touch on, and I'll turn to Andrew. This is a look back on your premium summary, a look back to '16, '17, '18, and this year's renewal. If you look at that top number, that's your non-work comp, your ICAP premium actually decreased about $2,000 this past year. And so we were pleased to see ICAP offer what we consider to be a flat renewal. And that says a lot about this county, and a lot about your claims history. You don't have a lot of non-work comp claims, so they were happy to offer a flat renewal. I think again, they did very fair for this county. Your work comp premium did increase about $18,000, and that's due to your mod increasing. And so when your mod increases, you see a little more premium. But again, IMWCA continues to be a great place for this county to be insured, because your gross premium, if you look at the footnote on that page, your gross premium is $456,000. And then it gets offset through a number of discounts by almost $30,000. Your mod offsets about 26% or $118,000. You get what's called a longevity, a large premium discount, loss experience credit, and offsets another one, $41,000. And then you get what's called a good experience bonus, which is another 20% of $30,000. These are not credits that we would normally receive on a standard market. IMWCA is sending a message to you, and other counties are willing to insure this county. It's a very, very fair renewal. As you see, the total premium was only a 4%, but if you compare it back to '16, '17, that was a 5% reduction. So it's a good renewal from our perspective. A quick look at your premium summary.
Questions about the renewal rate before we dig into where we go in the future, maybe with some of our deductibles?
No, because I think my questions are actually the next slide.
So you've got good loss history, you've had good renewals with ICAP and IMWCA, but we did take a look at, how could you perhaps, given that history, how could you perhaps save some premium?
Well, this is a question we asked you last time you were here to review this, and take a look at, do we have our deductibles? I tell you, Steve, before we go, I just want to make one point, and especially our work comp side of things. Now that we have a safety director in, you know, Todd has reviewed all of this information in detail, and I think it's a reasonable goal and expectation that we're going to have, that we're going to start to see, especially with the training kind of things that happen, that maybe putting an extra safety component in can help us with, that we could see some positive trend lines going forward.
We could be more pleased to see the county's investment in the risk manager, Joey, working with Todd, and I know there's a lot more we can do together. I agree with that trend. We'll just continue to progress.
So now that we brought up the risk manager, the new position, I did have a question I thought maybe we'd ask at a better time. Yeah, they'll ask it now. Is there any, is there ever experience shown that because somebody has a risk manager paying attention to all of this, that we actually open ourselves up to greater liability about the claims that we do have left, because we should have foreseen something?
I don't know that we can speak to any-
Hard for me to get to, Morris. So what I'm hearing you say is, by us doing more, by us stepping up and doing the right thing and putting an extra program in place, that somehow we've increased our liability when we didn't have that in the past. That's tough for me.
Well, it's tough for me too, but I'm asking. I mean, I support our program. I just want to, you know, it was a hidden downside, you know, unforeseeing consequence.
And so we went through something similar, Morris, when we created a human resources department. As you know, when I joined Board of Supervisors, there was no human resources department, and going down that road. And I started to say this back when we talked about the spike in '13, '14. Some of the spike in claims in '13, '14 was because we were doing a better job reporting everything rather than some things being missed going through, and it's why we saw the spike in reports without a spike, in fact, a decrease in overall payment. At the end, I would expect that we're going to see a very, very similar thing with the creation in addition of safety.
Yeah, so in regards to the amount of risk we're taking, isn't going to change, but we're going to become aware of those risks that we are taking. So it's just going to become awareness improvement. And with that being said, generally, when a risk manager and safety programs get implemented in any operation, there is a spike. It doesn't, it there's, it increases. The reporting increases. And that's simply because people aren't even aware of the exposures and stuff that are currently happening. So yeah, I expect the number to go up, but not because of any work that we're doing differently or anything that's been added. It's just that it's an awareness of it.
And important to underscore, the number of reports or possible incidents going up, not necessarily the dollar amount that's being expended on those, because I'll flip it and say, by the way, you're going to put a fresh set of eyes with a safety perspective on any training exercise that we're going to go through before we go through it. And when we see that that's our largest dot in terms of payout, that's our largest dollar amount for the work comp claims, that's one of those that we should be able to walk in. It doesn't mean that there's no risk. It means we ought to walk into it with our eyes wide open of where the risks are and try to mitigate those.
Exactly. It's just what this title is, completely risk management is what it is. And I've already addressed some of the training issues we've had. Went in and talked to Sheriff's Office about some of that stuff, and asked them, and it was pretty straightforward after talking to them. A few simple things we could have done differently to help reduce these risks that we had, so.
Sure. And then, thanks, Todd. And so now, before we move on to our deductible alternatives, I, Morris, I believe you and Marty both know that we do this, but we have an opportunity to sit down over in the Nat Tedesco offices and do a little more detailed personal information dive in all this. Todd's included in those conversations, as is County Attorney Jessica Reynolds and Alyssa Woodall. And so there were great staff-level conversations coming out of that talk about how we move forward and try to really address those. This is intended just to make sure that we as a board and the public get the information that's appropriate for the public.
Correct. Okay, thank you. Thanks for letting me ask the question.
Good question. Okay, was that, we'll turn to, we'd like to share with you some deductible alternatives on holiday, Andrew Rickles.
And again, as Rick pointed out earlier, we last during this meeting, we found out some deductible options. Kind of show you what we have today, and what's available, and then the cost savings. So the slide we have up there right now, this is just the current ICAP program. Midterm review, we did a full deductible trend, deductible options on work comp and IMWCA. It made zero sense to go to large deductible on work comp. I mean, the numbers didn't, the savings was so small, I mean, out-of-pocket costs were so much higher, we just scratched that pretty quickly, related out to some of the staff members here. Again, we're not writing that today, and that's just because it doesn't, there's just no, it's a waste of paper and time. So this is ICAP. So the current, current view of $10,000 deductible on property liability, law enforcement liability, and public officials. So that's that first column there. It shows your limits, and it shows your deductible. The auto and excess liability has no deductible. So we get no options there, because again, it currently adds zero. So there's no options available. We've got a $45,000 deductible and a $50,000 deductible with ICAP. You can kind of see the premium savings there. Again, the next slide, so now you're probably asking, well, what's the out-of-pocket cost with the large deductible? The next page in the top part gives you had a $25,000 deductible. The out-of-pocket cost over a five-year period would have been $28,000. Over that same five-year period, the liability would have been $19,000. And then law enforcement, you had no claims, so no out-of-pocket costs additional. And then the column below that, again, with $50,000 deductible on the property, with an additional $53,000 out-of-pocket, roughly $10,000 a year over a five-year period. Liability was $44,000 additional cost, and then again, law enforcement was zero additional cost. So again, I followed it in two different slides here. You could go down them all, but again, you could kind of go back and forth between these two slides and see the cost savings, and then again, the out-of-pocket costs.
Yes, so let's just do property real quick. So property, if we were to go from a $10,000 deductible to a $50,000 deductible, that would save us roughly $25,000 a year in premiums. And if you look at the last five years, in order to save that $25,000 a year, it would have cost us an additional $53,000, meaning substantial savings.
You're assuming a little more risk, but you can offset it with premium savings. I think it's, I think it's, that was a fairly straightforward. You could go at 25 or 50, but probably makes sense to go at 50.
So with property, we'd almost have to endure some catastrophic event, and considering our property is spread throughout the county, I mean, even though we've got substantial of it in Nevada, we still are looking at multiple locations.
Yeah, and how deductibles work is per occurrence, business. So we need a large tornado hits, that's an occurrence. So if it hits multiple buildings, you're only paying $50,000 one time. Now again, multiple tornadoes, that's different over a different time period. But again, one, your worst-case scenario to be is if a tornado comes through and hits multiple buildings in Nevada, that's one deductible on the property. And that's kind of a good leading to, so that property is very simple from an occurrence deductible standpoint. When you get into liability, the occurrence definition is very vague. And I say that meaning it just depends. So you, again, property, storm, that's one occurrence. Liability, it's really defined by the courts what an occurrence could be. You go, again, real quick, World Trade Center. There is still arguments today, is it one or two occurrences? Is it one or two? That's the argument in courts, and insurance would fight over that for years. Liability-wise, if something casual were to happen, unless you really know, I can't tell you if that's going to be one occurrence or multiple occurrences. If something were to happen to multiple buildings, or something were to happen that you're liable for, and that's, you know, back to our kind of recommendations here, I just want to make sure you just think about that from a liability standpoint. It's very hard to define an occurrence from a liability standpoint unless you know what the claim is and what happens.
And there's limit, there's minimal savings.
Premium, very limited premium savings. $2,000 to go to a 25, and $5,000 to go to 50. It doesn't really make a lot of sense.
And that, again, down to law enforcement liability, there's a little more savings there. Again, there's about 11, about $10,000 in savings on law enforcement liability, but again, occurrence deduct, the occurrence definition is just different. I just don't want to have it, some come up, or also, we've got 15 occurrences, and you think it's one, but the search goes, you know, it's 15 different occurrences, 15 different acts here, and then you've got $15,000 15 times. And that could either, again, it could happen, I don't, I could just narrow it right now. I'll give you the example, in our review, we had one where a lawn care company came through and mixed lawn chemicals, and it killed 80 lawns. Eighty different lawns were killed, they put the wrong chemicals on. Insurance company said, that's 80 different occurrences, 80 different times they put that. And then, so you get arguments, say, well, no, it was one occurrence, they mixed it one time wrong. Well, no, they're saying, I just don't want that to happen here from a liability standpoint.
And though you've not had claims in the law enforcement liability, there have been claims around the state and the area. And so I think somewhat reluctant to recommend a higher deductible there. You could look at a 25 if you wanted to, but again, the premium savings is only $5,000. To go to a 50, you might be, you may be assuming a little more risk than you. Again, property's clear cut. General liability, law enforcement were recommended. Keep it for days. We can always revisit next year.
I just want to understand how those assumptions work, but that's, it's just, it's a little different. Property, I think, property to me is kind of, it's pretty, you can picture it in your head, it's easy. Yep. Everything else is just a little different setup.
Questions or comments? So we can't take action on this today. My suggestion would be that we put consideration of moving property to a $50,000 deductible on an upcoming agenda for us to really discuss that. I look down unless you guys can make a strong case for why we wouldn't want to change anything other than property, or even consider changing anything other than property. I would struggle with that. Your thoughts?
Yes, very clear. You see, the history, it leads you to the conclusions you recommended. I don't disagree. I bet it do with my insurance agent. Makes it a wonderful choice. She confirms so, I would have to say, I would be have comfort-
I chuckle because he shares morning coffee with-
That's right.
Yeah. All of my insurance question, I know how to fix this. I can continue. And it's very, I appreciate the clarity. I think anybody watching, anybody reading it would be able to look over our shoulders and probably come to the same conclusion. I don't disagree with what you're suggesting that we do, and the rationalization of why.
Outstanding. Okay, so then, Alyssa, I'll ask that we get a future agenda item consideration taking our property deductible to $50,000, okay?
And I just want to make a comment to our law enforcement people. Thank you. I mean, zero claims in five years, and just the present environment is pretty specifically great. So congratulations.
Good. Phenomenal job. So, any other questions for Nat Tedesco?
No questions, Morris?
No.
So, how long, go ahead.
I was in, well, I was in Marshalltown yesterday, talking to a county supervisor for, with our emergency manager for most of the morning, and they were experiencing something I would never see here in Story County. And he was talking about how his insurance provider was, their Nat Tedesco was virtually the street across from the courthouse, and they were experiencing catastrophic loss too, in regards to what the tornado did to the courthouse, did to this business. And they had response within a half hour of the storm's sighting, and their insurance agent on site making recommendations. One of the things that they did with the devastation that they had, they had a structure on top of the roof, was pulled off, which opened a two-inch water main, which cascaded a lot of water throughout the building. Subsequently, the insurance provider, their Steve Dicku, contacted a national organization to come do a sustainment of the building in regards to both the structure, the paper involved, and the electronics and whatnot. But one of the follow-ups, the supervisor said that then they've got some acrimony from some of the local vendors that would like to have had the opportunity to be at that. Can you, I mean, is that, if we have, with our policy, if we should experience a Marshalltown, Marshall County event, what are we going to expect from you in regards to that same scenario?
You know, disasters are becoming a little more prevalent around the country, and so it is bringing about more discussion by insurance agencies and providers. In this case, with ICAP, you have what's called a benefit agreement. It's a little different structure than most standard areas, but it still provides the same benefits. And you've got extra expense that may pay for records preservation, water damage cleanup, whatever the case may be. You've also got loss of rents, an earnings loss, if by chance you lose the opportunity to continue to do something during that timeframe. You have valuable papers and protection and certain things. I went through it this morning, because I anticipated this might be a question, give what's happening around the state. And you've got about a million dollars of benefit-type coverage of any event or disaster. And so our job would be to come in, quickly deploy what we needed to do to protect whatever records, or equipment, or people, whatever you have. We have two clients impacted by a Marshalltown disaster. We quickly rally, just as we will here, to protect your-
Absolutely. Well, so what I take from that story, Marty, as much as anything is, clearly Marshall County has a really strong relationship with their insurance agency. You rapidly did what needed to be done. I believe Story County has exactly that. Steve, I was going to ask you, how long has Story County now had a relationship with Nat Tedesco? Any guess off the top of your head?
I'm going to look to Susan's.
She's dead.
Yeah, I mean, it's been easily 25 years.
Nat Tedesco, and Susan's been with us 25 years, and it's been 25-plus years, and we very much-
And a great one, we appreciate it.
And let me say in closing, we appreciate the investment the county has made, just in the Safety Committee, Safety Days, Risk Manager, the time that we spend analyzing claims and risk. And so we very much appreciate the investment from the board supervisors. We appreciate the partnership.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Consideration of minutes from July 31st. Move as presented.
Second.
Motion's second. Chee.
Aye.
Olson.
Aye.
Sanders, aye. Personnel actions as listed.
Move as presented.
Olson.
Aye.
Chee.
Aye.
Sanders, aye. Claims.
As listed.
Second.
Chee.
Aye.
Olson.
Aye.
Sanders, aye. Consent agenda.
Move as presented.
Second.
Olson.
Aye.
Chee.
Aye.
Sanders, aye. Public hearing, as we do have one today, discussion consideration of ordinance 274, renaming a portion of Lincoln Highway to East Lincoln Highway. Jerry, this is pretty straightforward. Ames and exit, they want to call it what they want to call it, so it matches up with the rest of Ames. Done?
No.
What else do you need to tell us? What else do you need to tell us?
Not that much more, really. Okay, I've moved to.
Yeah, well, we've got a public hearing, a hearing.
I'd like to set it up for me.
You have to look.
Okay, it's ordinance 274, again, it's renaming Lincoln Highway to East Lincoln Way, we're, the board is focusing on a portion of East Lincoln Way that's in section nine, grant township. This is kind of the overall area, I can see it on my screen. This is the east industrial area that was recently annexed from the I-35 freeway to 590th Avenue, which is the common incorporated boundary between Ames and the city of Nevada. This is a resource map from the city of Ames, and it shows you, this is a red line, it shows you the new corporate limits, the east industrial area that was annexed, and the yellow represents the name changes that the city has been working on, starting from 590th Avenue. They've used names of famous scientists, so that's what we see. Potter Avenue, which is inside the incorporated area of Ames, would be 590th, the unincorporated area, moving to the west, 580th. North of East Lincoln Way is going to be Teller Avenue, to the south is South Teller Avenue, which is right here. And then to the north and south of the corporate limits of Ames, it'll still be 580th Avenue. And then to the west here, east of I-35, 566th Avenue, will remain for the unincorporated portion, but the incorporated area that was annexed will be Flaming Avenue. So this is a map that we use for the notices that we send out to all property owners within a quarter of a mile. And primarily, what focused for the board this morning is that area that's west of 590th Avenue, which Ames is calling Potter Avenue, quarter-mile stretch. We've got three parcels. On the south side of the road, here's an aerial from 2017. Two of those parcels have dwellings, they're about an acre in size, and then we've got a 35-acre agricultural parcel. Background is, Rick mentioned, the city council approved through their process ordinance 4360, June 19 of this year, remaining Lincoln Highway from I-35 all the way out to 590th, which is now Potter Avenue. This is probably more information than what's before us, but we thought you might have some questions about maintenance. And a lot of this is based on the 28-year agreement. I want to thank Emily for working with the Ames staff, the county staff, engineer, our 911 coordinator, and collecting a lot of this information in this presentation today. But the city of Ames will plow the snow inside that quarter-mile stretch that we're talking about. And Story County, let's see, will be maintained by Story County, the north half will be maintained by the city of Ames, so the south half in that quarter-mile stretch will be maintained by Story County. Ames will plow 580th Avenue along Teller, north of US Highway 30, 13th Street, and then west on 13th Street to 570th Avenue. Ames will be responsible for maintenance within the incorporated portions, and then Story County will maintain those areas that are outside of the area of Ames. When you get to 566th Avenue or Fletcher Avenue, from the intersection of East Lincoln Way to the Cornerstone Church, Story County will plow and blade, because Ames does not have that equipment. And then Ames will be responsible for the maintenance inside the annexed area, and then Story County will maintain the area with its own mechanic. Emergency service providers, Story County Medical for ambulance, Nevada Fire Department Fire, the Story County Sheriff. We did communicate with a lot of folks on this, including the engineer, emergency management coordinator, 911 coordinator, obtained a lot of information from the engineering office about maintenance, road signage, worked with the 911 coordinator. With regard to, you know, whether or not the roads should be, the name should be changed, it was determined that in the unincorporated area, the name should stay the same as it currently is. We communicated with the sheriff's office, Nevada Fire, Story County Medical, to communicate what's being proposed here, the set notices as I mentioned, June, July 27. We also sent specific letters to the three property owners that are on the south side of that quarter-mile stretch. Their addresses will stay the same, but the road name will change from Lincoln Highway to East Lincoln Way. We also did the publication requirements in the three papers set, set out by the board on August 2. Four supervisors set resolution 19-3, so we're preparing for today. We went out to look at the signage, this is what's there, the city of Ames has already made the changes. We're working from the east to the west, and this is East Lincoln Way to Potter, we're at this intersection here. Looking to the west, these are the two residences on that south side, this is the east residence, and that's the west residence. Teller Avenue at 580th, that's looking to the south. And then far west, again, 566th Avenue. Through this process, we learned that there's a property owner who's in the unincorporated area of that road that is concerned, we want to make sure that the road actually had that 566th Avenue designation, so that stayed in addition to the new signs of the road. Code of Iowa 32.044A, which we talked about our process. We have to have three publica, three hearings, this is the first hearing, the next tour scheduled for the 14th and the 28th of August. There's language in there about making changes for historical or local significance, and it was determined that it's important to have the same stretch of the road with the same name for logistics, communication, for public safety. There is no fees associated with this request, and the properties in the unincorporated area, they'll still have their 911 signs, only the name change is being requested. This area's going to grow, we know it's going to grow, the east industrial area, so it's important to have consistency in naming. And with that, it brings us to the alternatives, which is option one, it's ordinance 274, first consideration, again, the second consideration will be on August 14, and then the third consideration will be on August 28.
Any questions for Jared before we open the public hearing?
No.
We'll open the public hearing and ask if there's anyone who would like to address ordinance 274. See, no one moving to the microphone, we'll close the public hearing, turn to the board for action.
With the consideration of alternative one, Story County Board of Supervisors have approved ordinance number 274 as proposed, the first consideration today, and scheduled the second one for August 14, third one for August 28.
Let's just schedule, let's just schedule the second one to start with.
Go ahead.
Yep.
I said it.
So we've got a motion to approve on first reading, 274, and set second reading for August 14th. Any further discussion?
None.
Chief.
Aye.
Olson.
Aye.
Sanders, aye. Second reading is set for the 14th, and we'll talk about whether we're doing a third reading or not at that. Thank you, Jared.
Thank you, Jared.
Thank you, Jared. Next is consideration of sending a budget amendment notice for publication. Lisa Martin.
Good morning again.
Good morning. I thought you'd be back.
Absolutely. Now that we've done all of it, we've got to actually send out notice.
No, no, this is a very new one.
Oh, you're doing another one?
Doing another one.
All right, good.
Yeah, good. We are dead enthusiastic.
The inside baseball is that she doesn't like to do budget.
Right. Basically, just a couple of items that popped up. The Carroll Prairie, Jordan, Carroll Prairie and Jordan Wildlife purchases are scheduled to be happening soon, and there are standard transfer plans involved that are not budgeted, they're still a committed area, so we need to budget those, along with the Justice Center roof, which is, is happening, that half of the dollars, put in for revenues. So, I'm amending revenues by 1.1, expenditures by 1.3, in order to accommodate those events, I would like to have a public hearing for the amendment on August 14.
And the intergovernmental revenues, that is the, the grant dollars that are associated with Jordan, is that right?
Correct, it was Jordan and Earl.
Okay. Questions for Lisa about sending this to publication? Very straightforward.
Right, but my only question is, the other half for Justice Center, when do we look at that? Jovi?
Paul, hopefully.
Okay.
Have you got 100% of the cost of the roof in here?
I've got 100% of the cost of the roof in here, and I've got 100% of the revenue for the roof in here, we've received 200%.
You've received, but you're putting all 400,000.
Yeah, yeah. That's it, thank you.
Then make a motion.
I will move that we approve the budget amendment notice for publication, with the hearing to be on August 28.
Second.
Motion's second, further discussion. Olson.
Aye.
Chief.
Aye.
Sanders, aye. Let's not have any more budget amendments for it, huh?
Oh, for your lips.
Thank you, Mrs. Martin. Next is discussion consideration of quote from Geotech for a geothermal flush at the Human Services Center.
Good morning.
No, yeah, you do it.
Good, sell.
Good. So Story County was one of the first to embrace geothermal?
Yes.
But what it means is that our systems are getting to an age that we've got some maintenance to do.
Yep, that's exactly what this is, it just met the life expectancy of the fluid network.
And how many years have we done that?
About a little over 20.
I think we're doing pretty good then.
Yeah, building opened in 98, with the well fields kind of used since about 97, so 21, 22 years.
Yeah, and so all I would ask in the future is that we make sure that this is part of our ongoing budget conversations.
What we ran into was this one, since it was our first go-round with it, we didn't know a whole lot about geothermal, so.
Nobody did.
Yeah, so there was some hurdles about how we was actually going to go out there anyway, so it just took longer to, logistics of making it happen, and then we had a little bit of disposal, conversation with the city of Ames, it worked out, so we just couldn't get a hard enough number during regular budget, but I didn't want to put it off.
Sure.
Till next fiscal year.
And there were any problem with algae in that system?
No, this one, it's just.
Here we do, and there we go.
Yeah, I was saying, what happened here, you know, it's up for speculation, but I think it was contaminated from the get-go, and it just took a few years for us to discover the problem.
Yep.
Nothing on that level, all the issues.
Super, just time to do it.
Just time to do it.
And we're going to try to absorb this 15 in current budget dollars, and we'll see where we stand at the end of the year.
Yep.
Okay. Other questions for Jovi?
None.
All right, I take a motion.
With the consideration from Geotech and West Inc. for our geothermal flush at Human Services Center for $15,000, $5.
I said it.
Motion in a second. Jovi, thanks.
Thank you, Jovi.
Chief.
Aye.
Olson.
Aye.
Sanders, aye. Leanne, how long are you going to, how long is this going to take?
Long enough to make it now and say two words.
Okay, good.
Two sentences.
Good morning.
Good morning.
The proposed change to the facade grant program is to change fiscal years 18 to fiscal year 19.
Any questions for Leanne?
None.
If not, I take a motion.
I move that we approve the presented facade grant program for fiscal year 18 with the changes fiscal year July 1, 2018, to June 30, 2019.
Motion's second, Olson.
Aye.
Chief.
Aye.
Sanders, aye. Do the same thing on handbooks. Or you're not going to be able to, are you?
Uh-uh. Sorry.
I will try, I will try.
So, as Matt's getting his presentation ready, I'm going to just kick it off. What he's been talking about is a project that's been on his, his work program for this summer. It's something that was developed a few years ago, and really kind of was not used, so we wanted to update it so it could be used and target audiences appointed towards the commission.
So, with the, I have the original force of commission, but I'm not sure how old it is, when I first looked at it, but actually, five or six years. But we, kind of, just to give you a summary of what it's all about, we have a little welcoming statement, just kind of informing everybody what Story County, what the worth commissions are, and update the names of the supervisors, their current people. And then maybe just a little introduction as to what worths and commissions are, what's the purpose, what they do. We updated on the stack here to a picture of you guys, those of you guys before, and then the current listing of worths and commissions. We created a new kind of hierarchy structure to show the flow of government in Story County, and who's under who, what's where, that kind of thing. Eligibility requirements, application process, very straightforward, didn't change too much. Created a new chart to show which boards and commissions have what power and what they can do. Iowa opening laws, that didn't change too much. Just some information on holding productive meetings, trying to keep things flowing. Updated the new notification thing for the new website, and then just some contact information with the things.
Shilbro.
So this is intended to go to all existing board commission members, and as they're appointed, new ones appointed, they will get copies as well.
Questions?
No, good solid day. Okay, good, it looks good. Just a couple of comments and notes here, all right. On, you have boost the conference board and the 911 service board, and I'm going to look out to Deb Schildroff out there, okay. I don't recall that the, this particular board has appointed any members of the public to either, to those three. Are we supposed to be appointing members of the public to the boost board, the conference boards, or the E-911 service board?
Good morning.
Good morning.
This, this was something that Leanne and I had talked about as we were looking through this list. On the boost board specifically, we, that's usually an internal appointment, either coming from the board supervisors or another staff person, so it is a board appointment, but we can, we can modify this to reflect that. The same with compensation board, that's typically the board finds those appointments, and we just run them through our regular process at the beginning of each year for that, that compensation.
Okay, I didn't question compensation. I'm sorry, no, I'm questioning the conference board, I took that to be the assessors boards, the mini and the, oh, wait, and the, the Story County assessors conference board, and I didn't know that we present, we, we need to be.
So maybe, maybe I'm just a little confused here, Laura, are you suggesting that it wouldn't be appropriate for us to have a handbook for boards and commissions that residents of Story County are serving on, on behalf of Story County, whether we appoint or not? So, conference board is a great example, yeah, that's made up of us and the mayors and people from the school system.
Correct.
But I still think it's appropriate for us to have a handbook for them to use or not use, just to help as they.
I see, okay, well, and if we're approaching it that way, maybe we should make a notation for boost, because other than the supervisor or a staff member, correct, we, we, we don't appoint the boost board itself, all right? And they don't have any, they set policy and decision authority, but not for us, correct?
Well, a lot of our boards do exactly that, whether we appoint or not, and, and so I, I just asked you this question about boost, if somebody contacted us here at Story County and said, hey, I'm really interested in serving on the boost board, and we forwarded that on.
To Mary, to the boost.
Exactly.
But wouldn't we have that type of relationship then with DECAT also, and some other ones? That's why I'm questioning that if we include all of those, we could do that, I'm not fighting one way or the other, I'm just pointing out we have inconsistency here about who we appoint and who respond to us for either decision-making authority, or we appoint them and they about who we appoint and who respond to us for either decision-making authority, or we appoint them and they have independent with cap capacity. So, either we wanna add some more people, or we wanna go ahead and take them out. Your call, okay?
Yeah, and so I, I like the idea of consistency. You and I just read this from two different perspectives.
Yes, yeah.
Um, and so, I'd say internal, let's just decide who we want this to be available to, and then let's listen. And if we want it to only be available to those that the board of supervisors appoint, great. And if we wanna do it for everybody, then let's get a good comprehensive list.
Okay, list sounds good to me.
Okay, anything else?
Yes, um, I'm going to page nine about the holy productive meetings, okay? And your one, two, three, fourth bullet point, um, there's a typo in it with the wording, says maybe, the board commission may be established, so we wanna get rid of the B. But I'd like to change the wording of the last, um, partial, the last sentence, um, you got there. Where it's talking about generally 15 minutes is usually enough time for the main presentation by an outside group, and three minutes has become a standard time for members of public. I'm somewhat uncomfortable saying just the three minutes, because each board and commission gets to decide. If you expand it into say, and three to five minutes, um, is the usual time, but, but they can set as much time or as little time as they all want. I know you're trying to give them guidance, but I'm a little, I'm uncomfortable with that. So I'd like to change that wording. The rest of them are, there's some other typos I can just send to you. I'll just send you my PowerPoint. That's what you get when you get an ex-editor looking over, okay? That's it.
All right, so three to five minutes has become, I, I still think that's okay, has become a standard time.
And I'll go with that for the three to five, as long as we get the, it's more guidance with a little flexibility.
All right, and you're gonna send some other editorial notes to them?
Correct.
So then I would suggest, uh, that we approve this on first reading, but note that there will be some amendments, and you can come back to us on consent. Just with, with those edits, does that work?
That's true. I will make that motion.
Okay. Marty?
I, I'm not displeased with the language I see. I guess I better serve.
Second it first.
Oh, we got a second. I guess you're looking for a bit. Just following along, yes, you have a second.
Okay, motion in a second. Anything further for us? And, okay, so, if, if we approve this, there will be some edits, it will come back to us, uh, on consent. Olson?
Aye.
Chee?
Aye.
Sanders, aye. Good job. Next item is discussion consideration of Resolution 1905 Dayton Ridge Final Plat. Jerry, this one should be pretty straightforward too, huh?
Straightforward. Should I sit down?
You. So we've been dealing with, we've been dealing with Dayton Ridge, right there on the north end of Dayton Parkway, uh, property owned by the Gibbons. And, uh, looks like we're ready to do the final plat.
Jeff and Mary Gibbons are right here today. If you have any questions about them. Uh, address 2272 Dayton Parkway Ames. Uh, we're in section 24, it's a 10.91 acre area. Property has been rezoned with the preliminary plats moved back in September to R1 Transitional Residential District. Current land use, again, in that 10 acres, Gibbons, uh, dwelling, as well as a few accessory structures around the north and west side of the dwelling. The grade increases in the south portion of the property, heavily tree. Location, again, the, uh, yellow star is where we're at. Northeast of City of Ames, 1.9 miles, it's over three miles southeast of the city of Gilbert. This is a close-up 2017 aerial view, the existing dwelling. Again, the accessory structures to the north of the property. As a part of the subdivision plat, um, the existing access off of Dayton Parkway, which leads from that private easement to the dwelling, will be removed with the subdivision. Again, what's proposed is four separate lots. The applicant's parcel, which is a little over six acres, 6.7 acres. The other three proposed lots, which are to the east of the applicant's, uh, lot, are over an acre in size. Again, this is part of Dayton Park, we explained the history of that, so we went through the preliminary plat. Um, it was opened by AL Dayton of Nevada in 1916. It was an existing swimming pool, uh, south of the applicant's dwelling, um, which has been removed, and he used that material for the dam checks, um, south of the house. So it's, it's kind of nice that the material is still on the site. Uh, so again, we're looking at four separate lots, uh, ranging in size from 6.7 to a little over an acre. R1 Transitional Residential District has a 25,000 square foot lot size. Um, all lots will take access to the privately constructed street, which will be privately owned and maintained and dedicated for public use. The minor differences from the preliminary plat to the final are the, uh, the common lot line between lots two and three was adjusted to the east to allow a little more space for future septic system on lot three. And then the, uh, north side of the Hammerhead was extended to allow the applicant to take direct access off that, the end of that hammerhead. So this plat reflects that. So this is the drawing, again, about a 10.9 acre area. Got the applicant's, um, lot four, contains the existing dwelling residences. And the driveway access off of that private driveway goes away with this request. And then you've got the three proposed new lots, which again are a little over acre, all taking access off of this new, uh, new street. Darren Moon, county engineer, and I did the site review, um, and just noted a few things. The road was constructed, the drains, uh, pipes were in. There was some erosion control we asked to add a few more, particularly west of where the check dam materials were put in, which applicant's been very responsive to all the comments that we've had. And then Darren commented that, um, there was some discussion about possibly paving this in the future. It's not required though, it's a gravel road. Uh, that, uh, if it do, if it is paved, that there'd be more of a center, uh, an elevation, crown be applied so that, um, it drains better and doesn't have ice below. So, we did a raw disney agency review, always one. Applicant provided, uh, the comment, uh, the information from the Gilbert Fire Chief, the utility, uh, service providers, water, electric, gas, acknowledging the project, acknowledging being able to provide the service. We asked for some minor adjustments, we spoke about on the plat, which we're taking care of. Environmental Health is supportive of allowing future builder, property owners to submit information from an engineer or soil, uh, soils representative with regard to soil characteristics for proposed septic systems. Um, the department, Environmental Health Department worked out a binding agreement that they're having the applicant sign. Uh, there were some questions about the, um, legal description, which it was determined that the information that was provided was acceptable. Assessors Department provided comments about how the property will be, uh, taxed in the future. Uh, we did send notices to property owners within a quarter mile, July 1 of this year. Also had communication with the City of Ames, since they're within two miles, and they communicated back that they will not be providing any formal response via resolution because it's in the Ames of a French rural residential, which puts that solely in the county's periphery for review. So here's a few site photos, this is the new street, uh, looking to the east, we're on the top of that Hammerhead. It's the south ha, uh, south end of the Hammerhead, looking south, can kind of see remnant of the swimming pool was, and it's pretty awesome, they reused that material on the check dam. Looking north, towards the north end of the Hammerhead. Previous driveway, again, um, we asked that to be ceded, and he was in the process of doing that, this photo shows that. So that will not be removed. Hammerhead was extended, he's trying to save some trees that are located on the east end of his house, so he can take direct access now through that, right through that river. There's the old swimming pool area, and it's helped out the future builder by kind of creating a little area there that can, could be used for a foundation. Now, this is the check dam area. Again, this is the material that was removed from the swimming pool.
Not work?
Yeah.
Need to work.
And then, uh, erosion control. This is just on the south side of the right away. And again, um, all the information that was requested, when the major plat was submitted. All the proposed improvements have been installed with the exception of water, gas, electric, with the applicant. We'll be extending private service lines to each of the lot at their expense. We have something, uh, from him with regard to that.
Yep.
And then the existing private drive went away, we asked for erosion control materials that were installed. Which brings us to alternative one, Story County Board Supervisors approves Resolution 19-5. Proposed major final subdivision plat of Dayton Ridge Plat 1, as put forth in subdivision 10-17.
So this one should be a fairly easy one, right? This is, um, with a few noted minor changes, this is just, uh, update of the preliminary plat that we've already approved. As you rightly note, this is a, an applicant that's going above and beyond, doing everything the right way and everything.
And was very responsive.
Any questions for Jerry?
No.
This is pretty painfully straightforward. I mean, I'm old enough to remember when we had John and Ann Whitefield's farm to the east of it, and Henry Grub Trail Accord to the north. Um, I would have to say Jeff and Mary have been very forthcoming. It was nice to hear the, uh, history involved in the area. As you drive past it, you didn't know it was there. They've done a good job of garnering all that information, and I'm sure they'd share with anybody. And I think it's just a natural progression of what's there. I suspect they're gonna have new neighbors here shortly coming up. And I would move, if it were at the point for approval of Resolution 1905 as presented for the proposed major final subdivision plat. Plat of Dayton Ridge Plat 1 as put forth in case S U B 10-17.
I'll second.
Motion in a second, I would just say that I love that we got some, some development going on in a way that's still a tip of the hat to our history. I think it's really, really cool, and appreciate Jeff and Mary doing, doing this and doing it the right way. Anything further?
None.
Chee?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Sanders, aye. Resolution 1905 passes, final plat is done. Thanks, good job, Jerry. Uh, next is discussion consideration, uh, to assist with meal costs associated with the summer enrichment program offered at Collins Maxwell Schools, as we've done in the past, but this looks like less dollars, Jean? I love that, Jean.
Well, thank you. Jean Cressy, United Way Story County, um, this is our second year that we've had a summer enrichment program at Collins. Um, Collins Maxwell School District is our partner, YSS is a partner, Story County Extension is a partner, I could go on and on on partners. Um, last year we did a pilot, we had 87 kids enrolled, not all 87 continued. This summer, and last summer it was four weeks, so if you recall, we had four weeks in June, and what we agreed to do with the Collins Maxwell School District was to reimburse what the state would reimburse for those summer food service program children. Unfortunately, well, maybe it's fortunately, uh, in, for a summer food service program to be 100% reimbursed, it has to be 50% of the students enrolled have to be free reduced. Uh, it's unfortunate, this is my political statement, it's unfortunate that Congress hasn't figured out that some of the country is rural and that it's not very, um, cost-effective for us. So, one thing what we don't want to have happen is for Collins Maxwell School District to lose money on the meal program. Uh, this summer it was extended to six weeks. Um, children that come are, uh, provided transportation from Maxwell High School to Collins Elementary, which is in Collins. Um, and they are fed breakfast and lunch, so this covers both meals. Um, last year, United Way asked the county board supervisors to go have these with us, that's a technical term. Um, and you all said yes, and so this, this, the reason why it's less is because we said to Collins Maxwell, we will reimburse, but only for the actual cost, um, and not for what you would be reimbursed from the Iowa Department of Education.
Which I think is reasonable, because they've got skin in the game as well.
Absolutely.
And, and so I think it's a reasonable solution you come to.
Yeah, so, um, we, one way or another, we will find the money to do, do this, and I think it would be easier if we do the, um, United Way would put in a half, and the board supervisors would put in a half.
And United Way's already good for putting in a half?
Absolutely.
All right, board questions or a motion?
I would move, oh, no questions, okay.
No, no, I have a speech, but then again, I'm always happy to see the push out because these kids are so well academically served.
It's...
But it's a school setting, and it's nice to see societies moving away from the, you know, the inhibitions that they have about, uh, I don't know what I'm gonna say, they have the problems they have with summer school. Because that, when you say the summer school, they get pushed back from the parents and students, these are the kids that are best served by putting them into a school setting, enriching them, feeding them, structuring them, and then turning it back, and then in short time returning them into the school year. Good job, and I would welcome your motion.
I move that we approve, um, reimbursing the Collins Maxwell Enrich, Summer Enrichment Program for meal costs in the amount of $1,141.80.
Second. Motion in a second, I would just note this. The reality is, these kind of programs do not happen without the personal, passionate, um, advocacy of Stephen. Jean, you bring it forward, so thank you, absolutely, thank you. Uh, further discussion?
None.
Olson?
Aye.
Chee?
Aye.
Sanders, aye, passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so now we are to departmental reports, Environmental Health Corps report. Margaret, I'm leaving, because I've got a meeting to go to, but you're doing a phenomenal job.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you. Marty, it's all yours.
Good morning. Glad to hear about the meeting.
Okay.
Margaret, this is the first of two presentations, you will be speaking to the board.
Sorry, you can just take a little snooze at right now.
No, no, I like your presentation, just kind of get to it.
Thank you.
Yeah. Right in time. No, no, is it, nope, nope, sorry.
No, it was told we were meeting that early again. Sorry.
Hey, I had to drive through it.
I was through that earlier.
Oh, no, you needed the second one, you did. Okay.
Okay, so, good morning.
Good morning.
Um, I'll start off talking about wells, we've done, uh, this is for the calendar year, eight well permits, six of which were water, surprising, the balance is changing. 12 wells have been plugged, one cistern, zero recabs, 112 water samples, and that's really hidden in our lab budget because, uh, we're doing a lot of arsenic testing, uh, that is covered by a D A N T O D mill. And time of transfer inspections, there's 20. We spent our full amount of our grant, uh, money for fiscal year, and this year we'll get the same amount, $3,600, and that should be on the consent agenda for next week, we haven't gotten the paperwork to sign yet. Uh, this well here, just incidentally, um, this has always been one of my favorite windmills in Story County. It's on, um, Highway, I mean, uh, on 70 there, um, just north of the Skew Bridge. And I always thought it was fine to drive, and it's not. We had, um, we had, you know, a severe rain event, and sure enough, I don't know if you can see here, but there's water on both sides of that well. And it's a farm field, so we're picking up the nitrates and the pesticides and this and that. So, um, that well unfortunately has to be plugged, it may be legal to swim now, but, um, it has to be plugged. I noticed, uh, that it's in the county right-of-way, so, uh, I reached out to Darren just this morning to see, um, if the county takes care of that or the property owner, because it is definitely in the road right-of-way.
What did he say?
Say what?
What did he say?
Um, I, it was, he hasn't responded.
Okay.
I've got front of my, okay. Um, the septic's, uh, we're behind, this year we're not as busy as usual. Uh, let's see, so we have done 32 inspections and 59 permits completed, uh, and repairs that line, there's a lot more to pay. And repairs that line, there's a lot more to repair that our software doesn't fully connect, so.
What are we looking at there in the picture?
That, okay, each moment, that is a distribution box back in the seventies. They put in concrete ones and they all corrode. And so, so now they put the plastic ones in with the levelers. So you can get even distribution to all the different lines just because this little box is going to mix, you know, this little uneven. If you, it's really nice addition. Let's see, what else? Pool, catch and tanning. So so far this year, one pool was closed because of the high chlorine. And incidentally, that happens to be where I took my certified pool operator training is at that place where they had a pool. So that was interesting. Three pools were positive for bacteria. Every month, they have to collect a sample and send it into the, to a certified lab. Has for chlorine, I mean, has for bacteria. And if it's positive, then they have to shock chlorinate it, test again, no, test twice and then shock chlorate it. And we, and we had three so far this year and we've never had it before. And then maybe about five years ago, it was all crypto. Crypto peridium, which is a lot of copper to take care of. But it's like these things come in waves in pools. I don't get it, it's, you know, it's really an odd phenomenon, but so three this year on the bacteria.
Remember, once you close a pool, how long is it before it can be reopened? Once like say the chlorine level goes down or once the bacteria is gone?
Yeah, there, that's a good question. There's, there's all, it depends on like if it's giardia, crypto peridium, bacteria. There's different chlorine levels versus time. So it all depends on how high they take it up, if they've got U V C V treatment. But if you have an incident, maybe move the pool kind of thing. There's different requirements for that. So it really depends on that chlorine. Sometimes you can get that fixed pretty quickly and then reopen it on Friday. Yeah, so it's, it's just a whole mixed bag of opportunities. Let's see, tanning. Kathy mentioned that a lot of the new apartments are coming in Ames are offering tanning that opportunity. So she's trying to work with Ames a little more to get that information from them because the state's not, you know, aware of some of them also. So we have to try and keep on top of those so that they can be inspected.
So as you become aware of these places, then you in turn put them on your inspection?
Yes, and we report to the state as well so that they have to get the permits.
So what were you asking the city names to do?
Just if it comes in on their sheets, on their, on the written plans and that, just like the, goes with the planning department. Let us know that they are planning on having, I think it, a, some, some reason.
Research for them?
Yes, really is.
Thank you.
Let's see, so what else did I want to mention? Two's, yep. Yeah, and Matt did a real good job this year inspecting those outdoor pools. It's always tricky getting all those inspected right away so that if there's any safety concerns, they can be addressed immediately. You know, because they're only open a few months, so he did great getting on top of that fast. Special projects, Swale Valley South. Valley South, they did decide to go with the roof treatment plant and not the on sites. So they're, they printed up their, they published their anti-neighbornation for the Swale Val, Swale Creek. And they're going for it with that.
And then how is that handled? Is it owned by the homeowners association?
Yes, yep. Let's see. Fernald, I've got some pictures in the next few sites here. We're asking Fernald folks, the few that are having some issues with property maintenance, property safety, to come in and talk to the board of health. And have them in on a decision on what needs to be done, just kind of bring it to the table to talk about. Presview is on the agenda for the board of health. Cameron Estates, I've got pictures, I embrace pictures. I'm kind of working on two failing mounds at Jismel Roadway. I issued a notice of violation to an installer for not calling us to get a final inspection before it was covered. And then working on code revisions, little by little with the board of health. I made a mistake of bringing too much to discuss and so now I'm doing them little by little so that there's time for more discussion and more time to think about things.
Revisions to the board of health, the code?
Yes, I'm sorry, yes, it's code. So here we are at Fernald, there's basically three properties right along Richland Street there on the south side. This, this is pictures of the back of property. And it burned several years ago and it's, and this is still the state that it's in. You can see that, you know, they, they did a good job of bringing it in and piling it up. And he's been working, worked on it again, it looks better, but it's still not where it needs to be. I did not issue a notice of violation because he is working on it and recently working on it. But I want the board of health to give their opinion on whether or not this should be considered public hazard, nuisance, whatever. And what he should do.
Are any of the neighbors speaking to them?
No.
Yeah.
Well, on the phone a little bit. So this is Prather, Prather residence. And this, this started off as a complaint on sewage going to the property to the east. Well, the one that we just looked at. And so was, the way he mediated that violation was move everybody out. And now that house is slowly starting to fall apart because nobody's living there. So he has contacted Ray Reynolds to talk about controlled drainage practice. And so the asbestos folks are coming in to see if there's any asbestos in the roof. And depending on that answer, they're going to go for it and burn this probably this summer, summertime. And hopefully, and then he plans to build or bring a modular in on this spot. So that would be a really nice improvement to that neighborhood. Let's see, and then the third one. You'll, you might notice there's a lot of cars here. This is a two-bedroom house. We received a complaint on this one regarding no septic system.
Okay.
And so I haven't issued the notice of violation yet. I'm, I'm still working on getting that letter to the woman that owns it. She's been a hard one to find, I think she's out of state. But so anyway, I asked Matt to see if he could go there and then it turned out the two deputies went instead. And just to serve that letter. So I'm not sure how I'm going to do a site review, if it's a dangerous situation. I don't know how that's going to work out, but so we'll see. So stay tuned on that. But anyway, it looks like there's a lot of people living in this small two-bedroom house. So that in itself might be a violation to the fire laws. Cameron State.
Before we move on, more so, here is just, we waived taxes on this property this past month.
We did?
Yes.
Okay, thank you for pointing that out.
Yes, so there's that component of the story too.
Yeah, thank you. This year they didn't apply for that waiver though.
Oh, they didn't?
They did not.
Okay, we adapted on it within the last year.
Does the board of health have the capability, given the situation that may exist here? I mean, no septic, we don't, okay? So you issued a, but notice of violation, it may be a fire issue also. And how quickly could the board of health come in and try to get people out of there with those truly life impacting protectors?
That's, that's a hard question to answer. As far as occupancy, you know, we, there's no building code. I, I don't think we can really, I've never enforced an occupancy thing. I can insist on, well, I see that many cars, it's going to be people. Insist on a bigger septic system. That's about all I can, what do you think, Marty?
You tell, you have a garage, you see it in the upper right-hand side, that possibly has turned into a second living site on this property. And by the cars parked there and the traffic it generates, clearly you have got people living there in a, in a state in the capacity that was oversized on the septic system. And it.
So there was one, but it crashed basically.
I don't have any record, so there was something.
We're, we have a modest amount of coding to enforce.
Okay.
To give fractions, Margaret, in regards to, but Matt, going and talking him last week that when he went to serve the paper to determine the owner. Between the calling, which turned into a lot of dead ends, to actually finding somebody to take receipt, not knowing if the owner may or be in Florida, maybe in Cedar Falls, or maybe in the house. Could not definitively say one another, this person was in the backyard, unfortunately had two deputy, road deputies that served the paper.
Okay.
So I would not be inclined to put Margaret or her department in any, you know.
Apparently they've gotten, the deputies have gotten several calls there before and that's why they suggested that they. They shouldn't be going in private spaces.
But if you didn't notice all these things, as she just showed you, her properties right next to one another.
I did.
Yeah, they just run in a line.
And then my other question is, we waived taxes and why did we waive taxes? I mean, was.
Well, it's an application process that she, I think is just on a income basis, on a.
It's a hardship.
A hardship basis, and we do this like to nine people.
Right, right.
It's not very many, but she made application, hit the criteria, we did it, and then it turns into this part.
Okay, thank you.
And then also the treasurer's office explained to me that if you're getting this waiver for the tax, you cannot be collecting rent on that same property. And this has been going on for a while, so I'm just, you know, so maybe that's why she decided not to apply for tax relief.
Thanks for bringing up today.
There's quite a layer of story and then we will visit on it again as the board of health is out again, so I think there'll be more in this story.
Okay, thank you.
So erosion control, Cameron Estates. Went out there, some of the business saw much erosion and so got a cut to the chase, called D N R and reported it to them. And got Fox Engineering a little excited about that whole thing. But as it turned out, D N R issued a notice of violation for erosion control. So, and they got their attention, they went out and did a lot of.
Mediation.
Put a lot of mediation.
It was interesting, I was at the Kelly pig roast, the fire department's first annual fundraiser pig roast on Saturday. And my husband and I sat down, crossed from a couple, started talking. And turns out that the wife owns property right there north of Cameron Estates. And so is paying very close attention to the entire erosion situation as she pointed out. She played in Swale Creek when she was young, et cetera. But, but also just this whole situation. So here you've got an absentee landowner, if you will, although she's still in the county, who is watching which, which is happening at Cameron Estates. And very concerned about the erosion. So thank you for being diligent about that. It's not just a few of us, you know, the government who are paying attention.
Yeah, and you know, once that soil is off the ground, then the water, I mean, there's no turn back, you know, it's going to be down the vault potentially, so. Got to catch it. Same deal, Iron Bridge subdivision, erosion. This was, this was really incredibly bad. You know, I'll say that yes, it can happen after that big rainstorm, but. But that's why you have erosion control for the events, you know, you have to figure it out, that's their job. This huge hole, top right, it was undeal and that soil is gone somewhere, right? So it's, it's down, yellow creek, yeah, it's gone, you know. And so, and you'll see they left a top off the septic tank and it filled with muddy water. Very dangerous to have that kind of situation with kids in the neighborhood. One, one lot over, there are kids playing, you know, so I got their attention on that. Just very, very, very bad erosion control and disrespect for that whole area. And this was that sensitive area. They tried to have Story County give the subdivision and they didn't. So now it's in the city of Huxley. I, and I keep city of Huxley proud of what's going on also. Yeah. So anyway, call, same thing, call, D N R field office, they went out and issued a notice of violation. And damn right away, they got their, whoa, it's next, it's next. So.
Were they aware, were the developers aware that this, that it looked like this, that this had occurred? The erosion?
There, that guy, one of the half-owner of the yellow homes, that's his house right there, Margaret Young.
Oh, in the bad, the erosion?
They totally know, they totally know, they're on their name, yeah, so they don't.
Anyway.
You kind of put the city of Huxley in your ears, did what they could have done? Because it's now in the city of Huxley, remember the conversation that we had here? When this property was looking towards being in the county into development, then it didn't. The city, did you kind of share with the city of Huxley while you were doing it?
Yes.
Yeah. Alright.
Presview, Jerry, Moore and I went out twice in July, the very beginning, very end. And fifteen trailers were gone. It's, I'm starting to see, you know, the light at the end of the tunnel, it's there, I'm seeing it, it's so cool. You know, these pictures, you know, it's kind of hard to get a grip on what's going on, but there's holes where they were. Where they went, I don't know, but, I don't know. Uh, failing mound, Matt and I went and worked on this one. That's like a river of stuff going into a little waterway, just. And so we've been sending lab samples, trying to figure out what's going on with the paint.
Where, where is this?
Yeah. This is on Sage Coach Road, almost up to Riverside. It's that little subdivision of three D houses by Baker.
Okay.
Yeah.
So are you, but you haven't issued any notice of violation or anything yet because you aren't quite clear what's wrong, is that?
Oh, they're working on it and there's, there's a little one-hour story which I'll spare everyone from. But they are cooperating and they are working on it. There's just some problems with how permitting worked, the final inspection, those kinds of things. But they are working on it, yes.
So you're saying this is really the resolution?
It is. If people are working on a problem, I do not issue a notice of violation or anything. I just, I feel like I get better response when they don't feel like they're being turned in.
Sure, I understand.
That's my approach, go to bed, that's my approach.
Okay, good.
Uh, let's see. We did conceptual reviews for Finco, rolling, they go to dog breeding, who moves subdivision. And then I need to revisit the Randbury Hill Bed Breakfast because they are just kind of ranking that right now. And when we're talking about the whole project, they were, it was going to be a D N R type wastewater pool. But now that they're just doing Bed and Breakfast, and they're just using that existing septic system. So I need to go back and work with them on sizing and see if they're going to blow out their system. Because, you know, Bed and Breakfast is a lot more use than.
They have, have they dropped permanently then? Are they saying they've dropped permanently doing kind of a med center or adding?
I don't, I can't speak to it.
Alright.
I think it's in the courts, so that's the problem. Yeah, they can't make any decisions unless, when it's, you know, it's a little bit of a while. And then one comment on Finco, I know that was kind of a big issue. One good, one, you know, several good things came out of one of those being, he's not burning his branches and stuff as much anymore. Because I think it was roughly like that legally he cannot be burning stuff there unless it's from that very property that he's cutting from. So, so that's another silver lining on this project. Training and meetings, oh, I'm still on the Iowa board, we meet monthly. And that board is giving the test to certify septic installers, so that's been a lot of work lately. Participated in Story County. Participated in the Story County Fair, move, C P O certification, healthy lifestyles, Kathy sent it to the bed bug webinar. And then Matt sits in on a lot of webinars with pups, that's it. Busy, busy, and thank you.
Thank you.
Questions?
No, appreciate what you do, you have a very small staff, you give a lot back in care of them. So thank you for, you have very interesting stories to tell. All right, well, that brings us to our public forum number two. If anybody is so inclined at this point, we only have, let's see, a couple members of the public. If anybody would like to speak to us about anything that they care to, now would be that time.
Can I speak as a public person?
I would think you are more than entitled, Margaret.
You were talking up there. Margaret James, my question is, you know, I was walking down the street in the video, why are we doing a blood drive for the county hospital as opposed to Red Cross? Because I, they're both having blood drives and I thought, oh, maybe I'd rather do my blood to the county.
I would turn to Leanne at that point, who's.
I, I, you know.
If you care to speak to that, because I think you have done the owner's work at getting the blood drives organized and participated in.
They had a flyer, that's, that's.
Yeah.
About, I just asked to listen. Three or four years ago, right about three, it was four years, 2015, reached out to Story County asking for the rest of the project on blood drives. And so we've just maintained that partnership with Red Cross. They actually come in, they organize the, everyone that's set up the marketing or do the external marketing, they set it up, we, we're the legs and arms of this. I'm not sure, I could do some research, do you know who was hosting the one?
Well, it's, it's, it's flyers I saw. And it's like, it's at, which, is it the new hospital? Yeah, so I can find out because we do have LifeServe that comes in and does it with the school. That's who, yeah, that's who the school usually partners with. Red Cross and Life Serve are, you know, the two, two names in the, I'll say this, but for the blood donation world. We've talked about actually looking at actually extending our partners in the next twenty years, but yeah, I, if you can find out who it is or else I can find out by the way. Does that answer your question?
Goodness, there is.
I guess, that's a worthy concern, I mean, you do have somebody in our community that has a need, I'm sure, whether they've, I would prefer somebody to talk to the hospital itself.
Yeah, and I can find out.
I mean, that's the next connection, if you're.
I don't know if they're doing, I don't know, I don't know enough about the industry that you think like the blood on site and maintain on site. If it's Life Serve, yeah, it's in the same old, that one.
Or if they get credit, maybe if there's a central bank for Central Iowa Blood Bank, if maybe Story Medical would get credit for those number of units as opposed to Life Serve. Yeah, okay, so Leanne has another special project, researched the blood collection in this trade. But it's, yeah.
Thank you, good question, Margaret, Leanne, I look forward to hearing once you come back with that. Anybody else? Okay, I just learned you got up. Okay, that point lays on assignments, committee meetings, and announcements, Doris.
Okay, let's see, I think I want to make sure that, that all the staff know, and also maybe public would like to weigh into a staff member or one of the supervisors, that next Monday afternoon, that's the thirteenth, that we are going to be having a discussion on legislative priorities. Someone from the chamber has requested, AIMS Chamber has requested that we have this discussion they do every year. Last year we had it after our elected officials and department head meeting. And this year they, they're asking to come in a little earlier. So that's August thirteenth, it's next Monday. So any of the staff who are listening or, as I said, members of the public who want to, you know, give feedback or whatever for us on our legislative priorities, please make sure that you know that and try to get information to us. Another kind of somewhat internal is the Safety Committee is meeting tomorrow. And on the agenda, one of the items has, happens to be the routine and non-routine tasks as we're trying to pull together some information. So I turn to my fellow board member and then the one who's gone, okay? So if you could, we, the request is we compile a short list of what our routine and our non-routine tasks are, so if you shoot it my way, I'll create a couple of, of items too and I'll bring them to the, the Safety Committee tomorrow, how's that? I know, it's, it's a variety, I, I'm driving, we think of like we drive, that puts us at risk, I'm looking at time out there, right?
Yeah, it's high-risk tasks, it's, it's not what you do on a daily basis, it's.
High-risk.
What you do has the potential for bodily injury or life threatening.
We, we can't hear you.
He's, he's saying it's what is the potential for high risk or bodily injury or puts us at a higher risk. Okay, so see, it should be a short list.
All right.
Hey, I'm good, I'll pass it on to you.
As I alluded to earlier this morning, I spent the morning with Keith Morgan, our emergency manage, management coordinator. In Marshalltown, talking to a Marshalltown supervisor about the story that's unfolding in their community in regards to what they are occurring and the problems and successes that they're having. And I'm, I'm doing it in behalf of the fact that we are in the middle of a COOCOG exercise. We'd like to see if there's any lessons learned or anything that we can bring back to us on a takeaway basis to implement into our planning. The long and the short of it, Marshall County, it does not have a COOCOG plant. And they, when we begin to bring it up in discussion, they would like to look at what we have, discuss about us being of help to them in formulating planning for future planning for these events. You never think that they're going to happen to you, you hope they're never going to happen to you, but when you have a neighbor that's going through them, you have the ability to both be helpful on a going forward basis and possibly learn from their hardships. And I think that we have this ability to do it. So in case in that process, we will be talking to them at the end of this month in regards to where they have gone from what we got yesterday. And I think I have talked to Deb and Alyssa and I may mention to Leanne, who's been the steward of our COOCOG document, that possibly she might be somebody that would sit down with their emergency management coordinator and help them grow something that would serve them on a going forward basis. There's much that they don't have that we take for granted. Right now we have luxury of already having something pretty robust and we're adding to it, we're changing it to reflect more of what we find. So once again, we have a neighbor to the east of here that is going through, you happen to drive through the community and I encourage anybody with freedom of movement and time to go over there and see what really, they have three tornadoes in the community. They have devastation in ways that just, you don't have words for it.
Right, and, and just to remind you, if somebody's listening who doesn't know what the COOCOG is or so, but that's our continuation of operations plan. And so they got hit, it doesn't do anything to address mitigation planning, but it says, hey, how are you going to keep government running after you get hit? And their, and their courthouse got hit, so they had immediate needs to move government operations.
So much of the damage was in the city confines of Marshalltown, so the county itself was kind of in the secondary role, under providing for its satellite operations and the courthouse itself, which were badly, badly damaged. So, and it was interesting, takeaway to talk to them about where they are with their insurance, a little have a step of their insurance provider too, so.
Thanks.
We are fortunate that did not befall us, but not by much. So I have nothing else, I maintain a motion to adjourn.
I move we adjourn.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Take the post.